War Room, Gwinnett County. The people's voice, keeping you informed. War Room, Gwinnett County, the people's voice.
Thank you for tuning in to War Room, Gwinnett County. I'm your host, Antonio Jones. What you just saw was Palestine protests right here in the county. This, to our credit, I guess about maybe five or six days ago, you can go and check the post, we kind of made a comment about this spreading. The prediction was that it would spread into our schools and we are still predicting that. And if we're wrong, you guys can come back and shout at us. But it's made its way into the county. And when we first start analyzing this thing, just kind of seeing it, how it's breaking out across the campuses and everything like that. If you rewind and go back to the whole COVID thing, think about all the masks and everything, how the policies and everything start to be implemented across the nation. How it seems like we had duplicate school board ideas across the nation. You know, you see the pattern here? And I think in the military, they may call this, or in law enforcement, they call this pattern recognition. So we got to realize these patterns and these trends that are happening across the nation so that we can better prepare for what's to come. And there are some people that's in the school system, on our school board, that I truly believe, in my opinion, are Marxist. And they want to see nothing more than civil unrest happening and breaking out. If you think about the BLM riots and everything that was attached to that, you know, they said that they were moving for one cause. And then when you looked at their website and started reading, it says, "One of the things that they wanted to do was disrupt the nuclear family", which this is the foundation and the baseline for civil society. If you don't have family, then you know, what happens after that point? You know, we're supposed to procreate, be fruitful and multiply? And without that, or attacks against our families, then we're just going to be on a downward spiral. So today, we're going to have a couple of guests on here. One in particular, people have been asking, you know, "When are you going to have this person on? When are they coming on? When are they coming on?" Because we have several people that are running for school board in District 3. And things have pretty much heated up in that area. A number of people have saw the things that have been going on in our school system. We got a budget of 3.2 billion. I'm not sure if they've approved that or not, but we're going to talk about all of that that's coming up. And if you don't like the price of your groceries and everything that's going on right now, the price of gas, all of this stuff is attached to our expenses that we pay. And if you look at your tax assessment, as far as what you pay in county taxes, that school, the school system is the most that we pay out. So this should be the most effective. You know, we believe in the law of relativity around here. And what we've been seeing unfold doesn't look like something that's productive, that's having good progress. We have school safety issues, just a number of things unfolding. But we want you guys to stick around and let me see if I can find this thing here, until we have the guest come on. Just stick around, we'll be right back.
Accelerate your business goals and brand presence on the world wide web by logging on to safewayhost.store to purchase domain names, web hosting, email hosting, SSL and more. We have 24/7 customer service and support available to our clients. Get started today so you can achieve your business goals by increasing your web presence. Log on to safewayhost.store today. That's safewayhost.store.
War Room, Gwinnett County. The people's voice, keeping you informed. War Room, Gwinnett County. The people's voice.
Thank you guys for sticking around. We're going to go over the, we're going to get together with a sheriff candidate today too as well. He's been on a couple of times. But this school board has been one of the things that, right after COVID, that opened a lot of people's eyes to what was going on from an educational standpoint. I think that we were on autopilot before that point. And now we're here. So I want to bring in a guest that people have been asking about. I've got, we've gotten plenty inboxes about this particular person coming on the show. They want to hear about the platform, what are his plans, the experiences. This guy's been at a number of school board meetings, has been following this for a while. And that person is Steve Gasper, candidate for District 3. Steve, welcome to the War Room.
Antonio, thank you so much for the invitation to be on your show. I'm really excited to be here. You know, again, my name is Steve Gasper and I am a candidate for school board District 3, which runs the entire west side of Gwinnett County, from Swanee Sugar Hill through Duluth, down into Peachtree Corners and a little part of Norcross. And you know, I'm excited to be here.
So before we get into your platform, what would you say was the straw that broke the camel's back to make you really start getting involved with the school board? Just that whole situation? We'll get into why you decided to run, but just you going as, I guess, as a parent and as a concerned citizen initially, what made you start getting involved?
Yeah, that's a great question. I think for, I think for me, and in fact, my wife and my kids was, was the beginning of COVID. And when COVID hit and everything shut down, life came to a complete stop and changed forever as we know it, including our schools closing and going completely digital. And my kids at the time were fourth graders and were really good students. And we just saw how, how that digital learning impacted their experience. Their not being in the classroom, not having interactions with their friends, with their teachers. And, and we saw them struggle immensely. And we knew right there that, that we had to do something to, to help them get back in school. And that kind of kicked off the whole, the whole process of me just, just getting involved, my wife getting involved early on and meeting with local moms. And just, you know, we wanted to do what we could to make a difference. And I remember attending our first school board meeting in June of that year. And we were the only two citizens that attended the school board meeting. And I remember several school members came up and thanked us for being there. And that kicked off a whole thing of other community members showing up at school board meetings. So that really for me was the beginning of this whole involvement.
So during that time when you guys at first started showing up, you said that you got a pretty good acceptance. Was the school board different or was it the, pretty much made up of, made up of the same people that you have now?
So, so at the time, the school board was, was very different. This was, of course, in 2020. And they were, you know, Jalen Wilbanks was still the superintendent. And, and there were, you know, a lot of school board members still on the board that had been there many, many years and provided, you know, a lot of years of great service. And, and that was, you know, the time where they welcomed our, our comments at the school board meeting. They thanked us for our input and, and knew that we were going to stay involved.
Yeah, so the next question is, has that particular culture around the interaction between the parents and school board changed with the new regime, as we would call it, in place now?
Yeah, it definitely has changed. And I think that really became evident over the, over the subsequent years since 2020 as more and more and more parents started to pay attention to what was going on, what was being taught in the classroom because of the digital learning environment. And they were having the opportunity, they were getting the opportunity to see their, what their kids were learning. And, and parents were starting to speak up with concerns of what was, what was, you know, how the, how education was being taught, how, you know, teachers would come online for, for, you know, potentially a short period of time throughout the day and the students would be kind of, you know, pushed to fend for their own and to, to find their own coursework and manage their own coursework. And, and parents started showing up at school board meetings and expressing their frustration with how things were, were going along, how, how, you know, how the use of masks at schools were, were, were taking place, how the, how the gradual increase of Chromebooks showing up in the classrooms. And of course, you know, the whole other issues that those kind of create on their own. And so parents really, really wanted to be involved. And they started showing up and, you know, by the dozens at, at school board meetings. And obviously I was happy to see that because like, you know, the more local support, the better we are off.
So the previous administration, would you say, because I would say we're fairly new to Gwinnett County. Me, my family and I are. I mean, new as in, we've been here about seven years. So there's many things that happened, I'm sure, before then in the school system was at, at a different state. So can you describe what it was like up under the previous leadership as opposed to the leadership now? As far as the school, the school culture overall, as far as the grades and things like that? And, you know, discipline as well, you know, was it a lot of violence breaking out during Will Banks's administration?
Yeah, that's, that's a good question. And I've, I've, I've been in Gwinnett County since 2009. And, and you know, my kids have been in GCPS since, since roughly 2013, 2014, right around that timeframe. And, and you know, like, like all parents, you know, we, we send our kids to school. We, we, they, they come home, they tell us about their day. And, and you know, things were, were, were moving well. They were getting the grades, they were, they were learning, our interactions with the, with the teachers during parent conferences, with the principals, the administrators, we're all, all very positive. And, and so, so at that point, you think, okay, well, things seem to be working well. And, and there's, there's no direct need for involvement. And obviously up until, up until COVID hit and we started attending school board meetings where our school board was, was, you know, led by Superintendent Will Banks. And, and we had five members of the school board that, that really, you know, worked to create a collaborative environment and, and, and create good, good, meaningful policy. And we never heard of, of any discipline, major discipline issues. I'm not here to say that there wasn't any, there, there always will, you know, have, have some exist, but not to the extent that we have been seeing over the past two, three, four years. With, with, with really not only the, the change in our superintendent, but they put the change in the makeup of the school board and, and really, you know, bringing these, these, these new policies to the forefront of, of our schools. And, and we are seeing firsthand, you know, how those are affecting our students. And, and, and you know, not only, you know, COVID has really, you know, created a lot of trauma for our kids and, and for our parents and, and for our community as a whole. And, and you know, watching, you know, discipline issues, and this all, this goes way back to, to not just GCPS change in the discipline policy, but just COVID as a whole, where kids had no outlet. And they, they came from, you know, homes that may not, you mentioned the nuclear family of, of two parents. And, you know, we were very cognizant that, that that is not the, the complete makeup of Gwinnett County. It's, you know, kids have, you know, are, are raised, you know, maybe a single parent household or with, with relatives. And so all that plays into, into part of what's going on. And, and our current school board, you know, really, really needs to do a better job listening to the parents, listening to the teachers, listening to the community and really hearing the, the trials and troubles that they go through on a daily basis. And have to act positively and create meaningful, meaningful policy to, to really bring that around.
Right, because, because essentially the, the board is just a representation of the people. So people have different degrees and things like that. And we can get into experience a little bit later in the conversation. But they're there to supposedly represent what the parents wants and needs are. And if they feel that, well, maybe this may not be the best idea because of whatever reason, that's when you sit down with the parents and try to come to some meaningful compromise. Then when they get back to the board meeting or work session and the things that they're having, they try to make sure that they get the most of what the parent is wanting to see. Because essentially the, the board members are, are the representatives.
Correct.
Real quick, let me, I'm going to do a quick plug for one of our sponsors, Fam USA. Let Fam USA manufacture your athletic uniforms, performance wear and children's apparel. These are all USA made products. Some of the products they produce are uniforms for baseball, basketball, football, cheerleading, lacrosse, volleyball and more. They work with a log of high school, middle schools and recreational sports departments. They are a great fit for teams on a budget with a short turnaround times. Average production is about two, three weeks. Fam USA works with brands that are looking to reshore their apparel production. They've been in business for 32 years and they are located in downtown Snellville. Their website is famus.co, famus.co. Or you can call 770-982-9913. That's 78, 770-982-9913. So coming up after this break, we're going to try to go into diversity, equity and inclusion. Talk about the budget that has been either in or proposed or approved. You can give the audience some insight on that, because I know you've been following that. And we'll talk a little bit about what you believe parents' roles are in this whole process, in, in between the interaction between the, the school system and, you know, what's happening there.
Super.
Be right back in a moment.
Accelerate your business goals and brand presence on the world wide web by logging on to safewayhost.store to purchase domain names, web hosting, email hosting, SSL and more. We have 24/7 customer service and support available to our clients. Get started today so you can achieve your business goals by increasing your web presence. Log on to safewayhost.store today. That's safewayhost.store.
War Room, Gwinnett County. The people's voice, keeping you informed. War Room, Gwinnett County, the people's voice.
Thank you for tuning in to War Room, Gwinnett County. If you're watching this, can you please do us a favor right now? Share this video, share this live. If you've not liked the page already, make sure you like and subscribe. Tell somebody about the War Room. We also have a comment section that's going on right now. If you have a couple of questions that you want to ask Steve, we can ask those on the fly. I'll tell you like we say all the time, if, if a guest comes on War Room, they don't have any prep on what the questions are. So if they make the step to come on here, that, that ought to say something about them. Because they're ready to take on any question that we throw at them or our audience here or concerned citizens may have for them. So that's, that's always a plus with us. All right, so let me get Steve back in here. So, so Steve, there has been a lot of things floating around in different organizations in the county that are, I would say, making the case that, you know, the county has been racist in their disciplinary policies and they treat, treating students a certain kind of way based on their race and gender and everything like that. So we have a lot of diversity, equity and inclusion talk. What is your assessment? You said you've been in Gwinnett County for, what, about 20 something years or something like that? Or at least 15 years?
About 15, yeah.
Okay, 15 years. So what, what is, has been your assessment? Do you think Gwinnett County is a racist county to be in?
Not at all. And I, and I think the, the beauty of Gwinnett County, especially over the last many, many years, is that it, it's grown in its diversity. And, and this is, this is America, this is, this is how we flourish. And, and I've always been the person, you know, to welcome everyone in and, and, you know, give them an opportunity to, to be successful. And that is no different than the position that I take within our schools. You know, but, but you know, we also have to be cognizant of the fact that, that, you know, when it comes very specifically to discipline, you mentioned, you know, there's, there's a lot of chatter that, that our discipline policy is, is, is targeting, you know, students of different races and different, different colors. You know, my position has always been, if, if, if you break a rule, you have to pay the consequences regardless of, of, of how you look. And it's, it's frustrating to, to see that this is the discussion that's taking place, but this is where we're at and we have to, we have to, you know, the deal of the hand that we're given. And so, you know, my position has always been, you know, strong discipline for those students that, that, that break the rules, just as if you and I went out and, 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 you know, and broke a law in, on the community, you know, we would have to suffer and pay the consequences. There, there shouldn't be any difference.
Right, so is it, is it your belief or would you be of the mind frame that if we have diversity officers that's, and this is the speak that's going on, based on what you, you just said or what I hear, that there's a class of students, particularly black students and other minority students that have been targeted? So now we need a diversity officer or to, to make sure that, you know, things are, you know, people are being disciplined properly? Is, is that a, like a pseudo assumption that the, the county's racist? And would this create like a protected class? Now, kids are smart. I got kids, they can hear, you know, maybe a difference or a slight difference of opinion or hey, maybe mom wants to do this or, you know, maybe dad believes that. And if they hear or see that, they jump right in and they're smart enough to try to, you know, play one against another. I got, I got four daughters, we got four daughters and, and they all have tried it. You know, what are your thoughts on that?
Right, right, no. And, and, and we have seen the, the growth in addition of, of diversity leadership within the, within the school system leadership. And, oh, sorry about that. I, I just, I went, my screen went crazy. Am I still there?
Yeah, yeah.
Super, okay. Yep, yep, we, you know, definitely seen that, definitely seen the influx of, of diversity leadership within, within the highest ranks of the, of the school system. And it, you know, that, you know, again, this is, this is, this is a tough conversation to have because they, they, they are watching how discipline action is, is being pushed towards, towards students of color, students of different races. And, and that, that in itself creates its own level of issues, you know, with, with all other students. And, and now the students look at it as there's preferential treatment taking place, there's more chances given to these students. And, and that, that what we've seen and what I've heard from administrators in our school, I've heard from my own kids in our school, from teachers, is that is causing more chaos in our schools and more problems in our schools. And, and this is what we have to reel in because it is, it is creating, is creating challenges for our teachers, for our administrators, where they're there to, to, to educate and teach our kids and not spend a majority of the class time working with students that, that are being disruptive in the classroom. I mean, referring specifically to teachers.
Yeah, it actually disenfranchises one group of kids and it enables another. You know, is that, you know?
Yes.
We, we, we don't need to be doing that in, in, in no part of life. We should not have favorites, show favoritism to, to any, any group. Like you said earlier, the, the rules are the rules. You know, the standards are the standards and that's the way it should be. Which kind of leads me into another thing. Speaking of standards, we're hearing that standards are trying to be lowered, you know, in different areas, I guess. So, you know, the grading scale, we saw this in some different parts of the, the country. What, what are your thoughts on that whole idea? Should we keep our standards high and just try to work with our kids and push them to make the grade? Or say, hey, maybe you'll need to spend some more time studying, get a tutor? Come to class early, ask for some of the teacher's time after? What are your, what are your thoughts on these, the standards process? Because it sounds like if, again, back to the group, the thing, if there are certain groups of kids, minorities, that are not able to make the grade, we need to lower the standards. Is that not kind of calling this group, group of kids, excuse my language, but stupid in some kind of way? I, I don't, I don't think that makes any sense.
Yeah, I, I would have to agree with what you said, that, you know, it really does. It really, it really singles them out. And, and we know how diverse Gwinnett County is. We, we talked about this earlier. And I know how diverse District 3 is, you know, in terms of, of, of the, the minority aspect of this district. And I'm very cognizant of the fact that, that students come from, from, you know, all, all different walks of life and, and different parental levels and, and support levels at home. And we are here to educate our kids to, to ultimately graduate them out into society to be strong contributing members. Because this is what, this is what drives our community. This is what drives business growth. This is what drives companies to come into Gwinnett is our great school systems, which are a true pillar and foundation of our, of our, of our county and of our society. And if, if we are, if we are just passing students through the system that, that, that don't understand what's going on, all of that translates into the backend when they become young adults and go out into the working world and, and try to get jobs. It's, in my opinion, it's just not, it's not setting them up for success. And, and you brought up some good points. There are a lot of good ways that we can help work with those students that, that, that need that additional level of help, whether it's after school programs, student mentors within, within the same classroom. I've seen it now with my kids' junior high class, you know, students that, that are doing very well in certain classes like math or, or, or social studies are paired up with other students that may be struggling and they're providing assistance. There's nothing wrong with that. I think that's great because kids learn well from their peers. And, and this is, we need to champion more of this.
That's, that's right. And to, to parents, parents need to be more involved on a positive side than they are. And to the parents that are out here that wants to defend, there've been some up and down in the comments on War Room. And we welcome all of that because other parents that want civil classrooms and everything need to be able to see what other parents are saying. You know, they've declared a position and maybe they want to defend their kid getting in trouble. Well, hey, at that point, they've declared themselves as opposition and there's nothing wrong with that. But we're going to try to make sure that there's order in classrooms and that teachers can do their jobs and kids can learn. Because that's essentially what they're there for. And the problem that, that's down the road from that is when you have a failing school system, just like you said, then you start having issues with economic development. So the fix for that is, let's just see how many apartments we can build in because we can increase our tax revenue as a county by doing that. But like Tim Lee said, when he came on here, that's running for commissioner in District 1, I believe, anytime you don't have up close to 60% or 60% better as, as far as your commercial as opposed to residential, then your taxes start to go through the roof. For every dollar that's made off of somebody that comes in the county, I think Tim says it's costing between a dollar and 10 and a dollar and 14 cents.
Wow, yeah.
So what's happening is we're bringing more people in and it's, it's great that people want to come and be in Gwinnett County. But the growth has to be managed in a responsible way. And the real way to bring more value to the county is to do the pick and shovel work, like you're saying, let's make sure our schools are great. Our kids are being educated, it's a safe place to be. Make sure we're taking care of our, our teachers that want to go in there and do a good job. And then we'll have a prosperous situation and there'll be some real value here rather than trying to do this, I call it the credit card theory, to where we bring a whole lot of people here, let's just put apartments everywhere. And it looks like everything is going good, but it's really not because it's costing more than we're able to keep up with. Because the public service that is needed with the more people that come in and especially when it's high density, that's just, it end up being a, a tax nightmare for the citizens.
Yeah, no, I know, I agree. And, and if I may, real quick, Antonio, I, you know, you, you know, you talk about the finances and you mentioned the, the, the 3.2 billion dollar budget. You may get to this at some point, so I apologize if I'm.
No, we can go ahead and get into it now.
Um, but, uh, you know, it, it is a tentatively approved budget and the school board still has to finalize it. But, you know, again, you know, this is, I'm a, I'm a Gwinnett paying, you know, Gwinnett taxpayer. And, and the last time I looked, my, you know, 70%, almost 70% of my tax bill goes to Gwinnett County Public Schools. And, and so, you know, regardless if you have kids in the school system, uh, our, our community needs to really, really pay attention to what is happening in our schools for the sole fact that you are paying so much money into our schools. And we have to make sure that, that, that us as board members are, are transparent in how that money's being spent. Uh, we have to have a superintendent that is transparent in how he or she is, is spending that money. And, and, you know, right now, that, that transparency is, 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 is hard to come by. And, and we're struggling with that. And, uh, you know, parents need to be involved at home as much as they can. We obviously know that, that, that nothing is, there's, this is not a perfect situation. Parents work. Sometimes parents have two and three jobs. Um, but we, we have to at least instill upon them that, 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 you know, this is much of their, of their support structure that they have to give their students as it is a student, as, as themselves and in being in the classroom. They have to, they have to feel that at home. And regardless of the fact that teachers spend more time with our students than we do as parents, uh, there's still that component that kids need at home in, in, in a level of support wherever they can find it.
Right. And we, we have to be very careful about the expansion of programs and, um, what, what we, most of us at War Room, what, what don't want to see is, we, that ain't, ain't no secret that we have, have 10 million plus people coming across the border.
Right.
And we think it's great that people want to come to America, but it needs to be done the right way, just like
Right.
growth in a county needs to be done the right way. So any, any programs that are being considered to be expanded upon, it needs to be, we, budget should only increase, and it's just my two cents, based on legal citizens coming into the school system, you know, and if they need, if whoever they are, if we need extra resources or whatever, that's fine. But we don't want to have anyone coming into the county, into our school system, any, any part of the public that's going to be on the, the hardworking taxpayers dime, that's not here doing it the right way, you know? And when we expand programs, this is where parents have to really, really pay attention. When the budget keeps getting more, it keeps getting higher. This is just a bill that's going to be passed down to us as taxpayers. So when we start to get into the weeds of, you know, is it affordable to live in Gwinnett County? These are some of the things that we should be looking at. Because that tax burden for the school system is pretty much going to hit everybody, you know, unless you can, are able to qualify, I believe, for some type of, uh, tax exemption.
Correct.
So we have to keep our eye on this and get rid of programs and positions that are, you know, that don't make sense, that are, end up costing the taxpayer more money. Uh, what, what say you, Steve?
Right, right. No, I, 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 I fully agree. And I, and I think this is where, this is where I, I feel with my background experience, I could bring that, that level of, 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 you know, diplomatic discussion to the school board with, with, you know, 23 years in the corporate space and understanding budgets and understanding how money is spent and, and negotiating and, and signing multimillion dollar contracts. And, and this is where, you know, we have to spend our money wisely. And right now, we're not seeing it spent wisely. We're seeing more money being applied towards, towards what I call middle management. You know, more deputies, more chiefs to the tune of quarter of a million, $300,000 plus year salaries. And that money is, the, the, and money is being taken away from, from where we need it the most, which is in the classroom, to the teachers, which are, which are the lifeblood of this system, which keep the lights on. Without the teachers, we don't have a school system. And, and when, when we're seeing programs being cut at the, at the, at the lowest level in the classroom in terms of, of, we're, we're watching right now, special ed classes being combined, which that is unacceptable because that just creates a massive burden on those, on those teachers and the parapros that are responsible for those, for the students that need that extra help and support. And, and so these are programs that we should not be cutting funds from, but adding funds to and, and thinning out middle management. I, like I said, spent 23 years in corporate America and, and, uh, you know, have watched years and years of, of middle management and layers being built and nothing really good comes of it. And, you know, need to give it back to the people to keep the lights on. And, and I've held, you know, sales positions in my lifetime, all the way up to, to, to VP position. So I, I know exactly what, what's involved.
So, so Steve, before we, um, wrap things up,
Mm-hmm.
tell, tell people what your, some of your top priorities, well, would be to work to get done if and when elected to the school board for, uh, District Three?
Yeah. So, so my, so thank you, Antonio. So my, I mean, my top priorities right now are just empowering our teachers. And like I said, and I'll continue to say it, they are the lifeblood of this system. Uh, we have to remove the barriers that prevent them from teaching all of our students equally, uh, which are discipline issues, uh, and, and, and work to, to do what we can to involve the parents. Uh, I want, I want safe and inclusive schools. I want everyone that walks the school building, not only the teachers and the parents and the administrators, but visitors to, to feel safe in our school buildings and, and not feel like they're, they're at risk of something happening. Uh, I, I, I believe in, 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 in trans, in transparency and fiscal accountability. We talked about it. And, and I want to make sure that, that, that the entire community, and not only my district, but the entire community knows what is going on with our budget, what's being approved, uh, where the money is being spent. Uh, and then, and then just, just enhance community involvement. I've been so involved the last four years, speaking at numerous school board meetings, you know, being the, being the voice of the, the teachers and parents that, that, that may not want to speak up or feel like there'll be retaliation against if they speak up. And, uh, and, you know, participating in, in, in district-wide committee meetings and, and activities, discipline action, superintendent transition, instructional resources review, just in working with parents. I want to, I want to keep that going. And, and, you know, the parents feel comfortable, teachers feel comfortable coming to me with, with their concerns and, and, and ideas. And being part of a school board and being a member is you need those constant ideas. You need that flow of ideas. Uh, me, myself having two kids in the system, you can only imagine the amount of ideas I get every day when they come home from school and go, you know, dad, you're not going to believe what, what happened at school today. Or hey, can you, if you do get elected, what, what can you do about this? Um, and so all that's important is to have, have, to know what's going on in the community so you can bring those, those fresh perspectives to the school board and, and, and be able to collaborate with the other four members of the board. Because at the end of the day, it's not me, it's we. It's, it's, I'm just a vote of one. We have to learn to collaborate. Uh, I've, I've met and, and trying to build bridges with, with other school board, current city school board members, because I know if elected, I have to be able to collaborate with them. And, and so I'm not afraid to do that. And, and that's, that's my position if I'm fortunate to be elected.
All right. So tell people how to follow you, how to find you, and, um, where to contribute to your, your campaign, Steve.
Yep, thank you. So, so we have a, we have a, a, an amazing website. It's, it's, uh, can be found at www dot vote steve gasper dot com. Uh, from there, you can, you can access my social media pages, but I am on Facebook and been very active. Uh, my Facebook page is Steve Gasper for Gwinnett. Uh, that feed is also comes into the website for those of you that don't have Facebook. Um, I have an active calendar on there with events that, that I am currently participating in and any, and some upcoming Zoom calls that I'm hosting just for voters to come on and ask questions, uh, between now and, and election day. And, um, you can also, uh, if you, if you're, you know, feel so inclined, could also contribute to my campaign, uh, through my website and through, access it through my Facebook page. And super grateful for, for any level of support that the community can continue to offer me.
Sounds great. Been a pleasure having you on and good luck, uh, with the campaign.
Thank you, Antonio. Appreciate the, appreciate the invite and, uh, thank you for the, for the, uh, for the opportunity.
All right. All right. We'll see you soon.
Thank you, sir.
All right. All right, guys. That was Steve Gasper. He's running for school board candidate, um, District Three. Um, we, we have a lot of work to do, but I, I do believe that there are some great candidates that are running, uh, for different offices here in Gwinnett. Uh, we, we just got to do the pick and shovel work to help and get them across the line. Uh, with a failing school system, um, everything just, it, it follows behind that. Uh, you've got economic development and everything that's, uh, dependent on that. And then not to mention that the students that are going to school, um, they need to leave with some tangibles so that they can go out into the workforce if, or if they have college in their sights, that they're prepared to, um, you know, go to college and, and, and be successful. Uh, we, the, the trades are a, a great place to be. If, if, if you're watching this and you have a kid and they haven't quite figured out what they want to do yet, uh, there is plenty of money to be made in, in the trades. So, um, I encourage you to, you know, look into that. You know, we live in a, a society now that if you work with your hands, that people don't, you know, they act like they don't have that much respect for you. But if you have a pipe or something go out in your house, you got to call the plumber. And anybody that's watching this, if you're a homeowner, you're watching this, plumbing is not cheap. These plumbers are not cheap. Um, so, um, I encourage you to, you know, look at that as an option. Um, I went to college, uh, I never used my degree, but, um, I'm entrepreneur or whatever, but that may not be in the sights for your kid. So just wanted to encourage you on that side of things. So we're going to take a 30 second commercial break and we'll be back. And, um, you guys stick around.
Accelerate your business goals and brand presence on the world wide web by logging on to safewayhost.store to purchase domain names, web hosting, email hosting, SSL and more. We have 24/7 customer service and support available to our clients. Get started today so you can achieve your business goals by increasing your web presence. Log on to safewayhost.store today. That's safewayhost.store.
War Room, Gwinnett County, the people's voice, keeping you informed. War Room, Gwinnett County, the people's voice.
Thank you guys for sticking around. War Room, Gwinnett County. Make sure you like, share and subscribe to the podcast. Also, if you guys didn't know, um, you can make a contribution. There have been people that have, um, you know, thrown a little something in the tip jar, as we call it. Um, there is a button up there. We have a cash tag. It's a War Room GC. That's War Room GC, just to kind of help us, uh, with the efforts or things who we're trying to do to do a little bit more marketing and promotions. Uh, this is what we call the public square. Uh, we have candidates come on, uh, for those that never watched War Room before. Um, it's a place for the citizens to come on. You don't have to be running for office to be coming on War Room and letting your voice be heard. We try to get your questions answered. And as said in the previous segment, we don't do any show prep as far as sending the questions to the candidates. So when they come on here, it's the first time they've heard the questions unless you guys have tipped them off, which is fine with the questions, uh, in the comments on the, um, that when we post the events and everything like that. So make sure that you share this podcast. That's the most important thing that you can do. So let me do another quick plug, um, for a, one sponsor that we have, a small business owner here in Gwinnett County. Uh, it's Bitzel's Chocolate. It's a 7,000 square foot state of the art facility located in Swanee, Georgia. Um, the brainchild of the chocolatier and entrepreneur, Ray Bitzel, and his business partner, co-founder, Dave, they run the place. So it features a line of affordable chef crafted delicacies paired while the guests move through. They have a whole Willy Wonka production line. I was there, saw it with my own eyes. I mean, it is really, really incredible place. Um, they are located at 453 North Hope Parkway in Swanee, Georgia, and they're open Monday, Wednesday and Thursday from 11:00 AM to 9:00 PM. On Fridays and Sundays, they're open from 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM. They're closed on Tuesdays. If you're looking to do a private event, I was there at a private event, a fundraiser, and I'm telling you, this, this place is incredible. Your kids, uh, I absolutely loved it. Uh, it's really like a Willy Wonka chocolate, uh, experience. They let you design your own chocolate and they have all of these conveyor belts and you can see what the machine's doing. It's a really interesting place. So you guys, make sure you check that out. That's bitselschocolate.com, bitselschocolate.com. Again, that's bitselschocolate.com. So bef- before we get into, uh, have the next guest on, this guest is running for sheriff of Gwinnett County. Um, I was listening to a, uh, Board of Commissioners meeting, I guess it was about two weeks ago or something like that. And the chair had, uh, something interesting to say, but I'm gonna play it and, uh, we'll go from there because we have a crime issue in the county and, um, we have to deal with that. And all the agencies that handle crime are important. That's your district attorney, your police officers, your sheriff, the people that's running the jail. All of that is very, very, very important. Uh, so let, let's play this code open before we have, uh, the guest come on.
Crime victims and survivors. And now I'd like to invite our district attorney, Madam Patsy Austin-Gatson, to share some remarks with us.
Last year, a jury found the defendant Carlton Sermon's not guilty for their murder after police found him with the murder weapon. After police found him with the murder weapon.
In Gwinnett County, murder suspects are more likely to be acquitted than in any other large neighboring county in metro Atlanta. In Gwinnett County, murder suspects are more likely to be acquitted than in any other large neighboring county in metro Atlanta. Voters elected Austin Gatson in 2020 based on a campaign promising reforms that she says she is delivering.
We had 18 young people that had their first brush with the law that are now having a second chance.
I think that the people that were let go when the new administration came in had a, had a lot more jury trial experience.
Hold on, let's, let's do this, guys. I think some people said they couldn't hear, uh, what Nicole was saying in the beginning. So I'm gonna, let's try to run that back because I really want you guys to hear this so you can get the full context of why we're playing this.
While violent crime in Gwinnett trends low, while violent crime in Gwinnett trends low, while violent crime in Gwinnett trends low, we recognize that it still happens. When someone becomes a victim of crime, it leaves a difficult and long-term impact on the individual and our community. For this reason, the Board of Commissioners has made historic investments in prevention and intervention, strategies that are led by law enforcement agencies like our district attorney's office, strategies that are led by law enforcement agencies like our district attorney's office. I value the work of our district attorney and the Office of Victim Witness Assistance Program. Thank you all for your hard work. The program and services offered help lift up crime survivors and victims in the aftermath of a traumatic event. From victims compensation and victim advocates to direct service nonprofits like Mosaic Georgia and Partnership Against Domestic Violence, Gwinnett County is proudly dedicated to the acute and long-term support of crime victims and survivors. And now I'd like to invite our district attorney, Madam Patsy Austin-Gatson, to share some remarks with us.
Last year, a jury found the defendant Carlton Sermon's not guilty for their murder after police found him with the murder weapon. After police found him with the murder weapon.
In Gwinnett County, murder suspects are more likely to be acquitted than in any other large neighboring county in metro Atlanta. In Gwinnett County, murder suspects are more likely to be acquitted than in any other large neighboring county in metro Atlanta. Voters elected Austin Gatson in 2020 based on a campaign promising reforms that she says she is delivering.
We had 18 young people that had their first brush with the law that are now having a second chance.
I think that the people that were let go when the new administration came in had a, had a lot more jury trial experience than a lot of the folks that were hired. I think that the people that were let go when the new administration came in had a, had a lot more jury trial experience than a lot of the folks that were hired.
She also says she didn't run on convictions. He says she ran to quote, "bring justice, equity and fairness to the situation." She also says she didn't run on convictions. He says she ran to quote, "bring justice, equity and fairness to the situation."
The people's voice.
All right, all right, y'all. I, I had to do that because I want you guys to understand that this is a, not just the war of the getting people elected. This is an information war. And this is in part why we do the War Room. The other part of this is, this is why some of the agencies right here in our- The other part of this is, this is why some of the agencies right here in our local government are running their offices like the mafia. Because if the information gets out, right? Then the people can make a better informed decision. So they don't want people talking, you know? So if, if, if you come out and you say something, they retaliate a- against you. They find a reason to get rid of you. They find a reason to fire you. And a lot of people have that rightfully so, um, concern. So that's why we do War Room and this is the main reason we got to replace people. Because if you go back, when you get a chance, go back and, and you look at the Board of Commissioners, uh, meeting, this is from a couple of weeks ago. I'll try to, we'll remember to put this, uh, link in there so you can watch the whole thing. As much as the local government says, well, you know, we try to not to get too far off into people's offices and everything like that. You mean, you're not paying attention to people that have lost loved ones. Um, Andrea Alby, well, I guess part of her, uh, marketing thing, which was brilliant. She had a video of mainly minorities complaining about people getting away virtually with murder that the district attorney either had, I guess, haphazardly, um, prosecuted or, I don't know. Maybe they got probation or some low level, um, you know, conviction or, or whatever. But at the end of the day, people are not happy with what's going on and what's coming out of this district attorney's office. And I wanted to have this on before the next guest come on because if people are not being prosecuted properly or unwittingly or wittingly, then this creates problems in other areas of law enforcement. If, if, if someone is really guilty and we can't get the conviction or there are some enabling speech that's going out, oh, I'm not running on convictions. That's like me saying, being a quarterback saying, hey, I'm not, I'm not running to lead the team or say hike every time so that the team can fire off the football and do their job. It just undermines the whole process. And where I'm from, you know, when the streets start talking, they know what's happening. Oh man, you go down there, people, they ain't really getting, they ain't really tough. They ain't really getting, the streets talk. They know what's going on and they know when the narrative is on their side or not. So we need good law enforcement, people to do the right thing, people to do things of integrity. So when we talk about law and order here on this show, those boxes are already pre-checked. You know, if, if there's issues, we want to have people abide by the law and do the right thing. Now, the guys that we trying to help get elected or whatever, though, we like to see elected. We don't want them to play with you when you get in there. We want, we want them to let you know, hey, this is serious business. This is not a resort that you come into, you know, to just sit back with your hands behind your head and live off the taxpayers' money. We'd rather you not be in here. So we're not gonna make you feel like you can get out here and get two and three and four chances or whatever. We want people to be corrected. We want to see them to make a, a turn in their life and become a positive, productive member of society. But that requires making good choices by that person. And, and honestly, some people are just not gonna, they're just not gonna do it. They not gonna get it. So with that said, that's why we have people that are running for office like this gentleman here. Joe Mark, welcome back to the War Room. Uh, we sent you that code open, uh, for a reason because government is supposed to operate as a body, right? That means we have different parts of it that are working together to move in whatever direction that in this case, that hopefully the citizens are choosing. But when we have our chair saying, and maybe Gwinnett is trending lower on a national level. No, we need to be talking about is crime less or more as opposed to last six months? The last six, um, years or whatever like that? We need to be setting our goals and speaking based on what we know reality is. Because the last time I checked in the people that I talked to, they don't feel safer in Gwinnett. They feel less safe. So what say you, Joe? Uh, Joe, what are your thoughts on the video? Cause I know you, you saw it, but I wanted you to see that because we're trying to piece information together. And we not trying to do like the, the mainstream and try to mislead people. We just trying to put the dots together because a lot of us, we're, we're really busy. We're working, we're trying to take care of families. We just don't have time to follow all this stuff.
Yeah, uh, well, first of all, thank you very much for, for taking the time and allowing me to come back on again today and talk. I know that, uh, your, your, your podcast carries a lot of weight with the citizens on, on both sides of the aisle. So I'm, I'm very thankful for the opportunity to, you know, to speak to everybody. Um, as far as the numbers are concerned, um, I know that, uh, well, what I'm trying to figure out specifically is exactly what are the numbers? Because until I get in there or get with somebody who's in there now that can, you know, give me the numbers, the real numbers. And when I say the real numbers is because it depends on how the stat is coded. So if the call comes out for service and, uh, the officer responds, it's coded, uh, almost like in the back rooms a, a certain way. Like if, um, let's say I have a, a handgun and, um, I stick it out the window and point it at, you know, a group of pedestrians on the side of the road, you know, that can be considered, you know, one, two, three, four, however many counts of, you know, ag assault with deadly weapon or whatever the charge is. But if say, for instance, that there's a drive-by shooting, right? And there's how many people in the house? A whole family, maybe some guests? That's considered one incident. So we, we have to figure out exactly what the standard is. And I, I, I don't think that they're trying to nefariously hide something. It's just, I'd like to get the information and see exactly where we're at for this particular point in time before I, I, I give an opinion. Does it feel like crime's up? Absolutely. My news break app goes off, it seems several times a day because I had it coded for Gwinnett. Shooting here, person shot there, uh, gang violence, uh, breaking and entering of vehicles. It just seems like that we are inundated with these alerts, at least me personally. And you're like, holy smokes, what the heck's going on? I don't remember this happening before. And you find yourself wondering, is crime really going up? Which I believe it is. And, um, I can give you my, my, my reasoning why, I'll back my statement up. Or are we just now to a point where, uh, technology has caught up to, you know, the times? And it just seems like it's easier to report and get information out. It's probably a combination of both, uh, candidly speaking, you know? I've been in Gwinnett my whole life, minus, you know, the time I was in the military or whatever. And I, I gotta tell you, there was like a handful of shootings a year growing up. Not freaking every other week, you know, a few, three people shot a week. It's, it's crazy. It's absolutely crazy.
Yeah. So your, your everyday assessment is seem, it, it seems to be a bit more.
It does, it does. And I gotta tell you, until we make changes, you know, it appears, right? That the, the traditional method or, you know, perpetrators commit crimes, police officers respond, investigate, arrest. They go to the sheriff's office, they're booked into the jail, they wait, court process. Clearly that's not working, right? So we have to think outside the box and figure out what we can do to really combat the crime. We have to do, well, it's a few things. One, we have to let people know that you're not going to come to Gwinnett and commit crimes, right? There are tactics and techniques that law enforcement can use without being overbearing, militaristic or, or violating people's rights that can deter crime without having to really work, right? So how great would that be if criminals always thought, well, shoot, I'm not gonna mess around in Gwinnett no more? You know, then it doesn't matter what happens on the backend because they're not gonna commit the crime to begin with. Because whatever that, that fear is or that penalty, because right choices and consequences are, it outweighs them. They're just gonna move on to a softer target. So I could tell you that I've communicated with all the chiefs of police. I'm still actually waiting to, to meet with Norcross. So I don't want to give out false information. But the other ones I've all met with, and I gotta tell you, uh, we're all very eager to work together to employ these tactics, um, and, and techniques to, to help deter that crime. The other big thing is education. Antonio, we have to, we have to change up our strategy, um, when it comes to incarcerating individuals, you know? Over the last few months, I've really started to get back into the community really a lot more. And not only am I talking with other officers and deputies, their family members and citizens, but I wanted to talk to the men and women that have actually been incarcerated and get their, get their mindset behind things, you know? Why are you a repeat offender? What is going on in your life or your circumstance where you find yourself in and out of the jail? Like I go to QuickTrip, you know what I'm saying? Like, so I truly believe that education is, is, is paramount. We have to educate and give people who are incarcerated or, you know, in that process of, of in and out of jail, other options. And instead of be talking more about the issues, I want to start now talking, because we all know what the issues are, right? Everybody knows, has a good idea of it. But I want to start talking about what am I physically gonna do about it? And I think we're far enough along into the campaign to where I don't have to worry about, you know, people taking ideas or whatever. Because at the end of the day, we want the best for the citizens. I hope you take my ideas, implement them now. At least we're gonna get a head start, you know what I'm saying? Like, it's not a, it's not a contest. Like, I don't care how it gets done, as long as it gets done, right? I mean, so.
Absolutely. So, so with, with the education piece, piece of it, I would, uh, assume that it's just not when they get to you. So would you say that you have a, maybe a vested interest in the childhood education?
Sure.
And hey, what's really going on at these schools? Because, you know, the, the children are the seeds and when they, when they sprout and the fruit comes, it's either gonna be b- good fruit or a little bit of bad fruit or too much, you know? What's going on, um, on that level? And what I would like to see, you know, just, you know, me speaking on my personal opinion is some type of interface between, okay, what are the problems and issues that we're seeing? Grade level school? Let me, let me run this memo over to the sheriff and, and see what he thinks and let him do some type of comparison of, you know, based on some different agencies or things that he, that he's been working with to try to help the people when they end up in jail to go down a more of a corrective path. Maybe his input or some feedback or some conversations he's had with some inmates or what have you can say, well, hey, here's, here's what I, here's what me as the sheriff have found. And here's where you guys make and try some different things or, you know, reach out to the parents or hey, or try to get the kid in this particular program. Because we don't want to completely eliminate consequences with, with anything because.
No, that's not what I'm saying.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not saying you saying that, but I'm just kind of putting it all into, into perspective or, or what have you. What, what do you think about that? You know, maybe some conversations, not anything formal. But if I was, you know, running a school, you know, I'd be talking back and forth, uh, with the sheriff and trying to get some information and just, you know, see what's going on, on the top side of things and see how we can try to stop, not really stop, but help the kids from not ending up there.
Yeah, so that is actually gonna fall perfectly into that, this ambassadorship program that I keep talking about. Um, and listen, I, I'm gonna keep adding people to this ambassadorship. By the ambassadorship, I mean representatives. These are gonna be, uh, community leaders. Cause you know how diverse and big we are, right? So I'm out with all these different communities and they are going to elect leaders that represent them. And those individuals are gonna be, um, obviously fingerprinted and background checked. And they're gonna have an ID card to get in and out of jail and they'll be part of my staff. Listen, if you are like, if you want to send a representative from the schools, like I was just at Shiloh, talking to some kids and I was speaking with a teacher there. I'd love to have her come and be on the ambassadorship program where they can, you know, interact with our agency, understand what's going on. And if they do need support, then all they gotta do is ask for it. And then that way, everybody's got a voice, nobody's getting overlooked. And like I said, listen, if it grows and it's popular, heck, I'll fill a, 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 a auditorium room full and we'll have these meetings however long it takes, you know, to, to, to get the community to come back together. That's fine. And then, you know, I've partnered with several nonprofits that we're gonna do, um, that are gonna provide mentorship programs. And there's gonna be, um, educational opportunities for persons that are incarcerated inside the jail, whether it be barber, barbers, cosmetologists, HVAC, um, heck, GED and, um, getting your GED turned into a high school diploma. That's actually a thing. I was speaking with an accredited, uh, program that's actually right here in Lawrenceville, where this lady is accredited through the state education to convert people's GED into high school diploma. And then they can get them into secondary, like college education, or they want to move on to something else, whether it be like a trade school. And this is gonna happen. Uh, this is, this is absolutely 100% gonna happen. And, you know, I really am gonna put, and I think there's already a classroom there. But we're gonna actually use the classroom, yeah.
So quick question. So how would you assure the taxpayers that, um, you'll be able to fund this without, um, taxes going up? Or significantly, you have any ideas that you can share with the people?
Sure, sure. First and foremost, um, my budget is, is fairly large and my team and I are looking at the budget. And not only am I pledging to the citizens that I will give money back the first year of my administration, I will return money to the general fund. I don't know exactly how much that is, but i- it's gonna be a significant amount of money, number one. Number two, I would like to responsibly reallocate some of that money to fund some of these programs. But the vast majority of them, they're already funded already. So they're, they're already established, reputable. I mean, look.
This is just to be a re- reallocation.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Optimization of what you have.
Absolutely. They're, they're already doing it now currently. All I want them to do is expand the program and bring it into the jail and give people because I don't want you to come back. And, you know, I want to figure out, why are you coming back? Is it your, do you not have a home? Or do you suffer from any kind of drug addiction or depression or mental health? You know, whatever the reason is, I'm, I have a whole team that's gonna be dedicated to, it's gonna be civilians and law enforcement working together. That's gonna be dedicated strictly to combat recidivism. And by recidivism, I mean, you know, the frequency at which an individual, uh, finds themselves incarcerated in and out of jail or in and out of prison. And like I said, these, these organizations are very reputable. Um, the one organization I want to do, uh, what I'll be working with, excuse me, is already in five prisons. It's a proven program, proven track record at zero expense to the taxpayer. Zero expense to the taxpayer. Why are we not doing that now? Heck, we can't even get, you know, preachers and, and other religious people in. We need to have interaction with the persons that are incarcerated. And I know right now that there's a staffing issue inside the jail and listen.
Let's talk about that. What, what? Tell the people why, why you believe that there's a staffing issue right now?
I don't think anybody wants to work for the current administration, plain and simple. I'm just gonna cut out the noise and be really candid with it. I don't think that people want to work for Sheriff Kibo Taylor and his administration.
What, what are some of the type of, uh, the, the extra problems that come with when you're understaffed and, um, under those, uh, conditions?
First of all, just, first of all, just the sheer working hours, you know? Right now, they are so severely understaffed and they went to eight hour shifts from 12 hour shift. And everybody's like, well, first of all, before they did it, they, they pulled the entire staff. You know, do you want to go to this eight hours? And they gave some song and dance, why it's gonna be better, more money or whatever. But, um, they completely ignored them because everybody said they wanted to go on 12, stay on 12s. So, um, sorry, my battery, I gotta plug my phone in. Um, so they went to the eights, they went to the eight hour shifts anyways. And what I, the reason I believe they did that is because they can have a deputy work eight hours and then go home for eight hours and then come back. So now you've got the same deputy working two shifts within the same 24 hour period. Or they'll take the lesser of two evils and bite the bullet and do an eight hour shift and then a mandatory overtime, eight hours, and then go home and rest. And they've been doing that now for months and months and months. These poor men and women are absolutely worked to death. The look of just angst, the wear and tear on their bodies, the wear and tear on their family life, not being able to be around their families is absolutely crippling. Now, do you necessarily want to have, when you, when you take somebody's rights away? Now, these people that are locked up, they have to rely on these deputies in the sheriff's office for everything. Their basic needs, food, water, medicine, clothing. Like, now, do you want that individual to have their own mental stress? I mean, you see how that. I mean, you see how that starts to compound? And, you know, security checks are not getting done properly and I can go on and on.
So people getting injured puts the inmates at at worse risk for injury for a number of different reasons. So, Joe, what what's the solution to get people to come back to the county to work? Uh, to get people to reconsider retiring? And um, what, what are your thoughts on that? Uh, there's a huge budget, there's been what, an extra forty? Thirty, forty, something million, knocking on fifty million dollars increase in the budget now as opposed to when uh Butch Conway was sheriff? Um, so that that should be plenty of money to make sure people get paid and they're uh taken care of.
There's, there is more than enough money. Tony, I'm telling you, there is more than enough money in that budget. You know, I've, I've heard um the sheriff make a statement, you know, we need more money from the county. I'm like, man, how much money do you need? Like, I want to say, okay, let's wave a magic wand, Sheriff Taylor. If we could just have a fantasy land, tell me how much money you think it's going to need. You just can't keep throwing money after a problem blindly and let it fix itself. At some point, you got to step back and say, Forsyth County fully staffed. You know, a lot of these municipalities are fully staffed. And you cannot use the excuse that nobody wants to be in law enforcement. Brookhaven, pretty much, they got fully staffed almost, you know, they're so. At some point, you got to look at yourself in the mirror and say, it's not that people don't want to work in law enforcement. People don't want to work in law enforcement in Gwinnett County. And why is that? And plain and simple, they're, they're, the organization is just. It's just a, a bad place to work right now, it's not a very happy place. It's not a very happy place.
I, I came up under leadership that was, that would told us, if if you didn't know the answer to something, ask questions. So what, what, what do you think the likelihood that the current regime would say, hey? Here's a county that's doing it the right way, maybe I should pick up the phone and go to lunch to. I, I, yeah, I'm, I'm dreaming, some, somebody wake, wake me up, Joe.
I did it, you know, um, I've reached out to a handful of agencies oh uh throughout the coun- uh country. That have similar demographics, both in population size, size of agency and uh ethnicity demographics that we have. And shoot, man, those agencies, not only are they full, full service, meaning they do the policing. And the jail and the courts and everything, whereas we have Gwinnett County Police and Gwinnett County Sheriff's Office. So not only are they full service, but the citizens love their agencies. They're so supported by all their agencies and their crime rate is substantially lower than ours. So.
Yeah. At some point. I, I was up in Forsyth um less than a month ago. And uh there was a, an event that was happening and, you know, the sheriff was there and uh people that was running for commission and. But anyway, you, you could just, you could tell the energy in the room, Joe, that. The, the, the concern, not really that they were concerned about something going on per se in the county. But just they're paying attention to detail and and willingness to do whatever they had to do to help. You know, this organization had raised some money for the sheriff's office and they had this situation where I guess you matched the tax dollars or whatever. So if, if they gave a thousand, it was two thousand dollars. Hey, just here, here you go, sheriff, whatever you need for this situation. But that's the kind of cohesiveness that has to happen. And I tell you how it will not happen if we run around the county collectively. Pit each other against each other from a race aspect, and that's where meritocracy and achievement comes in. And if somebody is in a situation where they feel like they was robbed of a situation and and they thought it was race based, then hey. Let's look at it, let's take a look.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Look at it, we, no, I don't think nobody will have a problem with that. But when we put out in the airwaves that, you know, you can't do this because you this background and it's, it just. It because that creates a, a, a protected class and it also makes accusations against others. And I'm just, I just, that just tears things apart.
Let me ask you this question, if somebody is given a position for a reason other than their merit and their skill set. I mean, me personally, I, I, I would have a hard time going to work every day. You know, knowing that I got my job because of, you know, my father. You know, let's just say my dad worked at the sheriff's office and I got a job solely because of it was him.
Nepotism, right?
Nepotism or whatever the reason is, you know, maybe it's a, a diversity hire or something, you know? Because first of all, that individual that got hired, what are you saying about that individual? That you're only worth, you know, whatever the reason is or your dad or whatever? I mean, that's kind of insulting to people, candidly speaking, I mean.
It is. It's really the insult to o- other people, if just say it's a race based situation, it's an insult to other people, that's that race. You know what I'm saying? Oh, we hired a, uh, we hired an Asian guy because of whatever, what it kept, well, how that supposed to make other Asians feel who I have working hard? And applying themselves and whatever, who showed up and stayed late and did everything to make it.
You know, you know, the other bone of contention that I hear a lot is, you know, I do have to bring in a lot of people. And I'm, obviously, we know that. But here's the thing, every time in the past, or I'm not going to say every time because that's, that's not fair. It appears that more times than not, when other officers are brought over to that organization. And they carry over the rank that they've had or they get a special unit, all that does is just. Beat down that deputy that's given loyalty to that organization for decades. There are so many people in that agency that are just talented out the wazoo, man. They are so talented, but, you know, they don't get the opportunity to come up through the ranks. They don't get the opportunity to go to the road or or do, because it's robbed from them. Because somebody from the police department came over that knows whomever. Or they gave us, I mean, dude, we got to level the playing field for real, like for real level it, not just talk about it and. Say we're going to be diverse, I mean.
That's right, let, let's just say everybody get on the line and when the whistle blow, hey, first man to cross the finish line.
That's it, performance base.
That's it, that's it, and we will all be greater and be in better positions because of that.
Right.
Well, that's, that's good to know, Joe, I mean, for the people to hear. You know, you spent a number of conversations offline, talking about a couple of different things, but.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. So um, if you got anything else, um, I, I saw Joseph ju- pop on, so I'm gonna get him set up after we.
Yeah, that's a cool guy, man, let me tell you that. Not a lot of people um have a, 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 a background like that, like he does. And, and he is an absolute inspiration, I gotta say. And I'll end it here, any person that has gone through the criminal justice system and it feels like that they need help with. Getting a job or they got problems with probation or what have you. Call me, you know, when I'm in office, call the sheriff's office, we will help you, I promise you. If you are somebody that wants to improve your life, better your life, I'll help you. And the next coming weeks, we're going to have the um, um, a, a walk in the park with uh some of the jail dog alumni. And that program is just huge and every popular, I can't wait to put that back in and expand it, so.
So Joe, right quick, you, you reminded me of something, the, the jail dogs. That you, you may have been, I don't want to say a part of a heated exchange, but you saw where we made up, we just reached, you know, just on the whim, reshared something about the jail dogs. And saying, hey, the house is a great program for people that's trying to um go in a corrective position and. There was all kinds of trolls on there, um.
Yeah, they're pretty, people get pretty mean, man.
So would you bring the jail dogs program back?
Hundred percent, it's coming back, not only is it coming back, but we're going to expand it. And we're going to expand it, you know, to, for like service dogs and, and, and we're going to explore, why did, why weren't the women allowed to have the jail dogs? They were giving cats, I, I'm, I'm pretty sure there was a logistic reason. But, you know, I mean, if the female uh inmates want to have jail dogs, we're going to look at that program because I think it's an awesome program, man. We need to do nothing but put that back into place, which I will day one, and, and then expand it and grow upon it. So that, that's an open and shut case.
And just for the records, if you're trying to rehabilitate somebody, the last thing you want to give them is a cat.
I, I, I personally am not a cat, cat lover, one of my, uh, one of my buddies is a diehard cat lover, man. I'm just like, why is the thing always looking at me sideways, bro, like for real? I don't know.
Man, I'm telling you, man, a cat can be, you can be, you know, having a good time with you one second, it go down the hall and some have them and come back and you pick the same cat and they scratch you.
You're done, tore up.
But anyway, it's, it's been great, Joe, we'll have to set up and have you come back on and keep us updated. Um, let the people know where to follow you and how to contribute to your cause.
WWW dot Joseph Mark for Sheriff dot com. I'm on Facebook, Instagram, Nextdoor, Twitter, Tweeter, thingy there, X or whatever it's called. Um, TikTok until they ban it, um. Dude, just call me, four seven zero nine three zero one two zero three, period, just call me, I'll answer the phone.
All right, guys, that's uh Joe Mark for Sheriff. Make sure you follow him and um, you know, so you can keep up with what's going on and I feel so compelled, contribute to the campaign.
Appreciate you so much, and vote, if you go down and vote, please, uh, poll, I'm on the Democratic ballot this year. Um, well, I've always been on the Democratic or independent ballot, so I don't even, anyways, pull the Democratic ballot and vote for me. I don't care what side of the fence you're on. It's time to put all that nonsense behind us, okay? So let's just vote for the right person and if you think that I'm the right person, uh, I'll be humbled uh and honored for, to earn your vote.
All right, well, that sounds good, my friend, so we'll, we'll see you on the next one, uh, Joe, we're going to get Joseph in here and uh it's been a pleasure.
Pleasure, sir, thank you, guys, bye bye.
All right, all right, see you soon. All right, guys, so that was Joe Mark for Sheriff. Um, you know, a lot of interesting things have went on in the jail. And um, as um Justice said, um, people don't leave good jobs. They will almost always leave bad leadership. So, Joe, if you can hear me, um, I got a, a special pop-up guest, you, you guys have got it, we want to just spend a few minutes with him. But you all have to, um, let me see if I can get him on here. You guys have to stick around to hear, I mean, he's been through the uh jail system, completely turned his life around. Um, doing pretty good for himself. Is um going out, he's been an inspiration to others, uh, just so many good things um that he's doing now. I think he recently went up to Nashville, they had him speak to, uh, up to Tennessee somewhere and they had him speak to a crowd of people. Uh, to encourage them to um, you know, make better choices. But uh, these are the stories that people need to hear and so that they can be encouraged because uh, none of us are perfect. You know, the Bible tells us that. And um, we saying every day, all of us, we all, we all do. Um, it says specifically in the Bible. Um, if, if a man says that he's not a sinner, he, he is a liar and the truth is not, is not in him. So um, I want to bring Joe on just to kind of, um, so you guys can see who he is. Hear part of his story and uh what he's doing now. So Joseph, uh, welcome to the war room, we met out at a, uh, it may have been a fun word, I don't know if it was particularly a fundraiser, it might have been. That uh Joe Mark was having, um, just was kind of out there hanging out and. We kind of ran into each other and um kind of dapped each other up and all of that and we just kind of got to talking and um. He was just telling me about your story, um, some of your humble beginnings and everything like that, some stuff you was into. Um, some time ago and where you are, so. Just introduce, let the people know who you are and let's just jump right into your story and uh just ready, said, go.
Uh, my name is Joseph Hicks, I am forty years old. I am pretty much a lifelong resident of Gwinnett County. Um, you know, I grew up in a very, um. I grew up in the foster care system and um grew up homes. Um, my mom was a prostitute, a crack addict, my father was a raging alcoholic. And um, you know, at a very early age, at seventeen, I committed um an aggravated assault and armed robbery with intent to kill. At seventeen years old, I went to prison for eight years in which that pretty much just set the tone to um. For the rest of my life, for the next twenty-four years, um, I was in and out of prison. I did a total of eighteen and a half years in prison. And um, you know, the last, the last, the last time I was incarcerated. Um, in the last nine months, I lost my whole family to this disease. Um, my father drank himself to death, my mom died from fatal fentanyl overdose. My brother relapsed, lost his job and got arrested and hung himself all within twenty-four hours. And um, you know, I've never been out for more than ninety days until now, I've been out for two years. Um, and I'm really just now finding out who I am and the things that I want to do and the things that interest me. And um, just trying to give back and be a part of the community in a way that I never have been. And um, you know, yeah, I did, we just got back from, um, we're actually on the road right now on the way back from Tennessee. Um, I've been doing some work with Most High Media, um. A, a beautiful organization, man, they do most high media, most high ministries. And um, we just filmed a documentary about this beautiful human being named Raleigh, who happens to be special needs. And we did a documentary on him, taking him to Dollywood, the amusement park, and it's just him enjoying life. And um, we got some filming in, you know, I'm trying to get some filming under my belt. My man Christian Jackson right here, the CEO of Most High Media, Most High Ministries. A man deemed the Montana Society, which affiliated with Most High Media, Most High Ministries as well. Uh, Montana Society, they, they deemed purchased a bunker out in Montana, um, there's a nuclear bunker. And what he does every summer, they renovated and turn it into an underground home and he takes guys in recovery that are trying to learn how to live, that are trying to get their lives together. And he takes them out there and they're building this bunker into a home and in, in that, in those hundred days. Um, they worked twelve steps, Alcoholics Anonymous and, and, and just working with these guys and trying to give them feet, trying to find feet to stand on. And to learn how to live life on life's terms without resorting back to substance abuse. Um, and yeah, man, this is what I'm doing today, I work at a private school. Uh, that's my, that's my, that's my real job right now, I work at a private school for troubled kids called the Choice Educational Academy, right here in Lawrenceville, Georgia. Um, I try to get involved in every facet of service work that I can be a part of. Um, there's a sense of fulfillment, somebody just told me the other day, they said, yeah, that's called spiritual currency. And that's what I get today because I spent years, you know, uh, involved, heavily involved with the cartels and trafficking. Narcotics all throughout the metro Atlanta area, but predominantly in Gwinnett County. So I know how, I know how it's distributed. I know how, I know, I know the lives that it shatters. And I know the lives that I've taken part in shattering, I was heavily involved with the gang culture. Um, you know, it was just that, 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 that storybook chronicle, like, you know, I became involved in the gang culture because of a shattered home life. Um, I was sexually and physically abused as a child, I'm an open book. I've learned for me that visualization and verbalization are the keys to recovery from my past. Seeing it, talking about it, owning it. And, you know, I've been out for two years, there've been a couple slips in the road, a couple bumps in the road, man. You know, where I um, where I resorted back to some old behavior, getting high, but it did, by the, by the grace of God, it didn't last long. So a couple of weekends and I was miserable because I had tasted just a small portion of how beautiful life can be. Um, I am a, I'm a, I'm a satisfied member of Alcoholics Anonymous, Narcotics Anonymous, but I also have. My faith in Jesus Christ is what sustains me, one thousand percent. Without him, I can do nothing. Um, you know, it's, it's, it's what keeps me going, it's what keeps me pushing. And I know that without him, none of the doors would be open that are opening in my life, man. And I know firm faith that, you know, Jesus Christ can open doors in my life that man can't close and he can close doors that man can't open. He does it every day for me. Um, he sustained me in my darkest times, man, and um, but I made a decision that when I lost my last loved one to this disease. Um, that I didn't want to die from this disease. I did not want to die from the, 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 from the disease of addiction. And so I began looking for a way out. I was, you know, somebody put it to me like, man, you were in a burning house. And if you're in a burning house, you're not looking for the flames, you're looking for the window. So I began to look for the window. And, you know, it's not, you know, the, you learn in the, in the rooms of, of AA and then amen that um. It's a program of progress and not perfection. And that's just like life, life is progress, it's not perfection, you know? Yeah, definitely, man, like you just said, like you just said, Antonio, you shared with me a little bit about your past, you know what I mean? And, and like, for all of sin and falling short of the glory of God, every single one of us, every single day. Every single day, you know what I mean? There's a, there's an area and, you know, but it's, I'm in a learning curve and I'm just, man, I'm so blessed. And I choose to try today to focus on the things that are right in my life rather than the wrong.
Um, so, so let me ask a question right quick, uh, Joseph. So if, if you was in front of a, a, a school, a school of kids, just say specifically young men. A school of kids, just say specifically young men right now, but this is, this is not limited to young men. What would you say to them, a young man who. Was either getting into the culture? I'm gonna do a whole culture series, so I'm gonna have you come back on to, to be a part of that. But that was getting, when I say the culture, that mean all the negative stuff, the drugs, just the, just everything, you know, um. Uh, the, you know, everything that comes along the culture. So I don't have to go down the list. What would you say to a young man who was. Thinking about going in that direction or who was already in the culture, right? What, what would you say to them right now? What, what would your plea be to them? How would you, how would you approach that person?
Honestly, man, I try to love them where they're at. Try to get down on their level, try to speak to them on their level. Because if you go at it. From a judgmental standpoint, like, boy, you need to get stuff together, duh, 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 you're not gonna listen. The lights are gonna turn off instantly. I've seen it happen. Working at the school, like, I've, I've seen it happen. Man, the choices that you make today will determine the man you become tomorrow, man. And there's no taking it back. There's no taking these things back. Once you get that felony on your record. Like even today, like my life is. A thousand, I still got a long way to go. But my life is a thousand times better than it ever has been. But I will continue to pay. Once you, you know, in an ideal society, you get a convicted felon, you get convicted of a felony, you get your probation or you get your prison sentence. Whatever the case may be. When that's done, that's supposed to be your payment, your debt to society has been paid. But in the reality of the situation is that's not, that's not, it's not how it works. You pay and you continue to pay and you continue to pay. I couldn't go out here and get an apartment in my name if I wanted to. By the grace of God, my woman has, didn't take the same, you know, detours in life that I did. And I don't have that, I don't have, I don't have that problem. But, and the people who pretend to be your friends are not your friends. They're not your friends, they're not your family. When you get locked up, they're not gonna be the ones to put money on your books. They're not gonna be the ones to worry about your safety. They're not gonna be the ones that accept that phone call that costs three dollars every time you call home. They're not. They're gonna disappear. You might come up in a product that you might be, you might be a topic of conversation for a few minutes every now and then when they're drinking or smoking a blunt and be like, hey, man, what's up, so and so? Oh, man, yeah, he's still locked up. Damn, I missed that guy. And then it's over with. It's almost like you're dead. Honestly. And, um. You know. Some people, I mean, a lot of people, we just have to learn on our own, you know? Because you feel isolated. You feel like you don't have that fa- that family dynamic at home. Which is why me and Joe have discussed, you know, a lot of his ideas. In regards to the Sheriff's Department and the jail. I was actually gonna sit down with Joe at some point this week and discuss getting the Montana Society because what they do. It's, there's not, there's gonna be ninety episodes and in those ninety episodes, you're gonna take you through the twelve steps and it's gonna be digitalized. So this is trying to get it into the jails. For these guys that are not getting the recovery, because these guys in Gwinnett County Jail right now are locked down twenty-three hours a day. They have nothing but them and their tablet in that room. Jail conditions are horrible. My brother's death could have been prevented, which is what. I mean, it connected me with Joe. So like, just giving people another option. Instead of, you know, Sheriff Kibo Taylor wanting to go spend six million dollars on a new juvenile detention facility, how about we build some community centers? How about we get out here and work with these kids, man? Instead of expelling a kid from school. How about we look into his home life and dig a little bit deeper and see what's really going on behind the scenes to figure out what's making this kid act out or lash out the way he is? How about we love on him a little bit? Instead of just automatically, let's. Kick him out of school, send him to the Give Center, which is a horrible place in Lawrenceville that, that, yeah, it's like a plan B. It's an alternative school. But it's, it's a breeding ground for the gang culture and the drug culture. That's all it is. You know. Penitentiaries are not always the answer. Prison is not always the answer. You know, you have to look into, this is the future. This, these kids are our future. Like, this is the future of our society as we know it. So, yeah, we could sweep them under the rug right now and not have to worry about it right now, but what's that gonna look like ten years from now? So like, just getting down and getting involved with them, man. Giving them, I mean, I think just giving kids another outlet. Um, there's another organization that, that, that Most High is affiliated with called Eternal Strength out in Alpharetta, man. It's a radical approach to youth. Therapy. Amazing place. Amazing. Like, just, it's gonna take some, man, you gotta be the change that you wanna see, right? And it just, you know what I mean? It's gonna take. Joe Mark can't go into a juvenile facility and talk to these kids and them listen. He can't. You know what I mean? It's gonna take people.
It's like, it's like, it's like two, two things mixed together. Yeah, I was like touching, that's what I was touching on, you know, I. We, it, it, this, uh, on a chessboard, you have different players for different things because it's definitely not checkers. So I think we there. You have different players for different things. So the mastermind behind that whole thing. Has to understand each player, what they do, why they doing it. Because at the end of the day, the, the, the goal is to win. Success in this case that we're talking about. Is people changing their lives. The only thing that really can change the, the hearts and minds of, of man is. Is the Bible, is, is getting saved and becoming a Christian. But the, the beginning step of going in that direction. Is like you said, finding out what's going on with this particular person. And you have people like yourself that do that. Um, it may be others. There may be different levels, different steps depending on, uh, what's happening. But like I was talking to Joe earlier, you may not, I don't know, you may not have heard in the podcast. It's just like government operating as a body. Or a family operating as a unit, man and woman. He made the two, to, to coexist. Now, the Bible is very clear. About the man being, uh, the head of the household. And, but he would always listen to his wife, take input, not just kind of blow her off and all that. That's how we do here. But it's supposed to operate as a body, you know? That's why when you got a, you got District Attorney office, you got a sheriff's office, you got police. Um, you've got inmates that are actually in the jail. So we wanna have options because the goal is to try to get these, these guys and, and, and gals. To make a change. Turn around or at least give them options to, because you made a choice. So we wanna make sure that there's enough things out in front of them, of course. So that they'll make that choice and become a productive member of society, you know? And, um, when you have people locked down for twenty-some hours a day, I just don't see that happening. Because you, you start to backtrack. You might be having people getting anxiety. Uh, depression and all of that from just being in one room. That, that sounds depressing within itself. Yeah, I know it's the jail or whatever the case may be. But the end goal, we want people to change their lives. We're not, we know that the people aren't allowed to be on the vacation. We understand that point. And the fact that they're there and can't interact is a part of what they're paying for, whatever they're going through. But we wanna have things in place for them to, you know, we wanna have the chaplains be able to come in for people to do that. Different activities or whatever the case may be. I'm totally with that. We want guys to turn around. We want gals to turn their, have the opportunity, excuse me, opportunity to turn their lives around.
Yeah, man, it's like. You know, once you leave the county jail, you go to the Department of Corrections. But there's no correcting going on. Like, you're just warehousing these guys and they're coming home worse than they were before, especially. You know, you take a drug addict who gets caught with a small possession amount of drugs and you send him to prison. Now he's in a ninety-six man dorm surrounded by killers, rapers and robbers and, and traffickers. And he's not gonna come home conducive to society. He's not gonna come home better. That's not, it's not fixing the problem. There's not, there's no addressing of the problem. There's no addressing of the issues. And, you know, like, like you were talking about with the jail, the twenty-three, yeah, it's supposed to be jail. There's supposed to be, you know, there's supposed to be some structure. There's supposed to be some punishment. On the flip side of the same token, there should be, and what Joe was talking about, you know, bringing in the barbershop program. Bringing in, you know, offering these guys the chance to get some OJT, some on-the-job training under the belt. Providing another outlet, another option for some guys that normally wouldn't have one. Because let's face it, I mean, the, the system as a whole is flawed. The criminal justice system, the foster, the foster care system, man, they took me out of a home and placed me in another home. They took me out of my mom's home, which was bad. And they placed me in a home that was worse than the home they took me out of. You know, and this is supposed to be state-funded, state-run, so like, there needs to be change, man. And, you know, Joe. You know, no, no other candidate, let me go ahead and get this out there, man. And I'm not. I can't vote. I'm, I don't get any endorsements, you know what I mean? Like, I, my, my, my. My resume as a convicted felon prevents me from having that opportunity right now. But Joe is the only person to reach out to me in regards to what happened. With the suicide of my brother in Gwinnett County Detention Center. And he helped me, sent me in the right directions to get the documents that I need to move forward with that situation. And, in doing so. You know. He said, man. With, just a, just a heartfelt conversation, he said, man, you know how many times I've seen these guys do that walk of shame from the jail to the quick trip with no option, nowhere to go. No family, no nothing. What are they supposed to do? You know, and it's just a blunt, very blunt. Like, what are they supposed to do? There's a break. There's a, there's, there's some fatal flaws in the system right now in Gwinnett County. And. And if we don't address it, it's not gonna get better. There's a reason why that jail used to hold a thousand people twenty-five years ago and now it's thirty-five hundred. There's a reason why. And, you know, it's gonna take a breath of fresh air. It's gonna take somebody with a different agenda. You know, and what Joe was talking about, you know, with the recidivism panel. With guys that have made it, you know, because in the state of Georgia. Eighty-eight percent of all inmates that get out of Georgia prison on any given day. Eighty-eight percent will return within the first twelve months. It's one of the highest recidivism rates in the country per capita. Why is that so? Instead of looking at why is that so, it's just, we just accept that it is what it is. You know, and. It's, it's, it's a sad situation, man. It's sad. So I just, you know, I got involved with Joe. Joe was talking about an ambassadorship program. He wants, you know, um, transparency. That's another thing you hear from all these politicians. And I posed a difficult question to Joe when I first met him. So you talking about transparency, my guy? What do you do? What? What is your plan of action in place to promote transparency? And his immediate response, he was like, dude, that answer is not with me. That answer is with people, y'all. The people. What do you wanna know? Because nothing in that Sheriff's Department is G fourteen classified. Nothing should be kept from the public. The public should know what's going on in that facility. And they don't. Yeah, but we should, man. And, 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 and nobody knows. You know, they put it on the media that they shut down the jail dogs program so they could renovate the pods. That's a lie. Like, these are, but, and, and unless people speak out and speak up about what's going on. Then the community as a whole is just gonna accept whatever's put out there on whatever news work that, that, whatever news network that they choose to watch.
But the deputies and the officers probably afraid of the retaliation, you know, we kind of went through that earlier.
I have personally spoken with three deputies. Two weeks ago. That, um. Said as much. Like, look, let Joe know. We see him. But we can't. Voice up, we can't say nothing. Yeah, these, man, it's like, it's almost like Hitler's running that place over there, man. That, that fear of, fear of, fear of retaliation is a real thing in that place right now, man. And that shouldn't be either. That shouldn't be like that, man.
Rocking a hard place because people think, they, they having to make a hard decision because it's like. Do I come forward or do I lose the, the stream of money? To pay my bills with, you know what I'm saying? That's, that's a tough. That's a tough spot to be in. So most guys that had the means have been like, well, I can go get somewhere else. Or. I'll just go ahead and take that early retirement, uh, situation, you know?
Everything that Joe is doing. You know, everything, the, the one thing that gets me the most about Joe, man, and like I said, man, I, I'm, I don't. I don't really get involved. I don't, not really. I don't get involved in politics, man. But the one thing that Joe has done and continues to do behind the scenes. Joe called me last week and he said, listen, man, I'm gonna get you involved. With, I wanna introduce you to this guy's name is Pastor Lee Robbins, man. He's got a program called Tackle the Shackles. And it's, it's focusing on re- recidivism and re-entry. They go back into the prisons and they work with these guys. And like. Just a, he does that behind the scenes. He don't, he don't do no promo for that. He don't get no promotions for that. Like. He went and visited two of my recovery, my, my, my recovery communities out here in Lawrenceville. We are living proof. And sat down with them and like had an open conversation and they loved him. And like. You know, the opposite, the, the mindset that he has for rehabilitation and recovery is what personally speaks to my heart. Because there's not enough focus on it, you know, which is so quick to throw, lock a person up and throw away the key. Without exploring other oppor- options or other opportunities in regards to, you know, like. Kibo, man, he posted that video talking about how would you want your loved ones to be treated if they were in my facility? You wouldn't want them to deteriorate away. But yet on June, June tenth, two thousand twenty-two, my brother told the deputy after just getting off of suicide watch. That he didn't feel comfortable being in the room by himself in a classification unit. Could he please call somebody? And the deputy just backed him up into the cell, shut the door and locked it and did do a round for two hours. When he came back, my brother was brain dead. Um, but Joe. Man. Has opened doors for me, man. Sitting at a restaurant, he leans over in my ears, like, how would you like to go speak at Morehouse College? Like. Opened some major doors for me and continues to be a part of my life on a personal level, outside of social media, outside of these apps. You know, in a, in a real involved way. The things, man, listen, I want you to know. Joseph, as long as you were doing the right thing. As long as you're doing the right thing, I will back your play one thousand percent. And that's, that's the joke.
Joseph, you might be going through a, a bad area, yeah. It, um, it just, it just clipped out. All right, y'all, we having some technical problems. All right. So that was Joseph. He, uh, he may be coming back on, um, in a couple of seconds, but we got. We got seven, we got a few people. We need at least seven shares, uh, right now. Can you guys do that for us? Uh, Joseph's message is very, very, very powerful. You know, and it's, it speaks to so many different aspects of local government, law enforcement. And a whole nother part of it. So if you guys would please share this video, uh, right now. Because people need to see it, see this. We're gonna clip some parts of it and, um, put it out there on another occasion, but. Please share this. If you're watching this, uh, live right now, please hit share for us. Let me get Joseph, uh, back in here. Uh, so we can. All right, so, um. Go ahead. You, you, you were saying that, um, your, your brother had passed away because. Nobody would come and, um. You know, he was saying he didn't wanna be in a room by himself. He was feeling suicidal. He had been on suicidal watch. And, uh, they just kind of.
Here's the crazy thing. So when I originally met with Joe in regards to discussing what happened with my brother. They had Joe and somebody else, I won't say their name. Joe and, you know, one of his supporters, his main supporter, really, um, had. They had acquired all the list of names of these people that had died. Not technically in custody. Here's, here's, here's where it gets kind of weird. My brother was brain dead in the hospital. And was given an OR bond, signed out on his own recognizance. Still haven't quite figured out how his signature was signed or how he was released on his own recognizance if he, if he was brain dead and in a coma. But Joe explained to me why that happened. It was so they wouldn't have to report another in custody death. Now, mind you, three days before this happened. Fox Five aired a segment on Gwinnett County Jail. Having ten deaths in the jail in the past nine or ten months, which is more than DeKalb, Fulton and Cobb combined. And they wanted to know why. And then three days after that segment aired, my brother committed suicide in the jail. And they released him from custody on his own recognizance in the hospital so they wouldn't have to report another in custody death. And. It's just a, man, it's, um. I'm not a conspiracy theorist, but I am a realist. You know, and if it's, my mama used to tell me, man, if it looks like a duck and it quacks like a duck, it's probably a duck. But sometimes it might be a chicken, you know? And that's just, um, and, and, and you gotta call it how you see it, man. And like. I don't know of any other candidate, man, who has, um. You know, Joe took a risk bringing me on the way he has. Here I am. Fifteen felonies on my record. You know. Not. Yeah, just definitely. You, you're opening the door to kids, a lot of, a lot of, a lot of flack. From, from certain individuals and certain people, man, because he has. You know, he, man, he calls me at five thirty in the morning. Hey, bro, listen, what do you think about this? And runs, I'm like, man, that's amazing. Dude, this ambassadorship program. Where, you know, he has the desire to go into the pods in the jail and sit down with the inmates and discuss what I, what, what. I have never. And I've been going to that jail since nineteen ninety-nine. Never have I once laid eyes on the sheriff. Not one time. Not once. He's like the guy that you don't see ever. So the fact that he wants to do that and this ambassadorship program with, with representatives from each community. Whether it be the African-American community, the Hispanic community, the recovery community, the, just all aboard and report to him once a week. So that he can have his finger on the pulse of what's going on and the changes that he can make and the changes that he has power over. So like, that's, um, and he's not a politician. He has no history in politics. You know, his, 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 he, it's a breath of fresh air, man. Um. Because if you do what you've always done, you're gonna get what you've always gotten. You know what I mean? We're gonna keep getting the same results.
That's right, the same result.
Yeah, Antonio, I was gonna say, man, Antonio, it's gonna take people like you. You know, I mean, like you, me and you, we, we talked for a good minute at that event, man. Antonio, I was gonna say, man, Antonio, it's gonna take people like you, you know, I mean, like you, me and you, we, we talked for a good minute at that event, man. And like, you know, and I started, I watched your podcast already not knowing that, that was your podcast. And, um, but then you broke down like your, your musical history and like the people, and the people you used to be involved with.
Oh, man. The culture, people gonna have to tune in for that culture because, because the, the culture is a, is an ongoing thing. And see, we gonna tie all this into our morality, our sin nature, uh, just, just all of it, you know what I'm saying? And it's, it's a blessing to be able to have met you and heard and, you know, all of the different changes and the maturation of, of yourself just in, in your skin as a human and, you know, giving your life to the Lord and, and really understanding the, the, you know, the, the cross and just where you are in your life. Hey, I had a couple of slip ups, but hey, I'm back. I am not going to let this defeat me because the work was already done when, when, when Jesus went to the cross and died for us, you know? I just have to be, continue to wake up, ask repent, ask for forgiveness and continue to exercise my faithfulness to him. That's powerful, you know? That's powerful. And you know, that can ties into my, you know, my story, where I came from and you know, we gonna talk about all of this. I can't wait. And I got some other people that's gonna come on, on the, um, podcast and, um, talk to as well. Because this information going out, the, a real true understanding of the toxicity of different things. And we want parents because a lot of parents listening to, listening to the podcast. And, um, that way you can give them some insight. I'm, I'm a, I'm one player, I'm a one, um, item on the chessboard. You're a whole different item on the chessboard. They can take the best of two of that and hopefully the, the word of God and try to make the best decision for their kids of, and understanding them and covering them, uh, moving forward, you know what I mean? So I'm so excited about that part, um, of, of, of everything. Because I know, man, I'm telling you, like, we gotta get together, me and you, like, like physically together. So I can literally show you, I want you to see some of this stuff with your own eyes of, of the, uh, different things that I've been able to do and different people I've been involved with as far as in the industry of, of just doing things. So you can put your eyes and your ears on something. You gonna, you, you, I'm telling you, you're gonna be like, there is no way that, that you didn't, you weren't way up here with the stuff I heard, saw, and know, I'm telling you. And, uh, I'm excited because God's giving me a different, another chance to, um, do something different, you know, with my voice and, and, and with my life. And I'm like, like you say, hey, I'm, I'm the happiest I've ever been. You know, and I've been on big stages and stuff and all kinds of stuff. You know, I'm, I'm so content with where I am. I know I'm doing what I'm, I should be doing and I'm just feeling in my spirit, the best is yet to come. And I want Lord to use me however he wants to, you know?
Yeah, man, Antonio, definitely, man. And listen, man, I, I, I really wanna, I would like for you to connect with, um, my guy right there, man. It's Reverend Christian Jansen, Most High Media, man. Anybody watching, man, like, check out the Most High Media app. It's Christ. Man, he's, 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 he's an ordained Christian minister.
Well, you know, I know David, don't you?
David.
Cleo, Cleo?
Oh, you know, oh, you know David Cleo?
Yeah.
That's my, that's my guy, man.
I, I, yeah, I know David. Yeah. I know, I know Dave. I call, I call him Dave.
Man, listen, bro, that is, that is my brother from another mother right there, man. Like that is my guy. David is on this podcast every Friday night almost.
I, I know. We, me and him been talking about getting him on to talk about what they do with that organization because
He's a lifesaver.
People need to hear it and, and use it as, as a resource, you know, just resource if they need to or feel so compelled. So I wanted to have him on. We kept missing it because we had scheduled to be on a couple of times. And I think the schedules is something end up coming up, uh, both times, but, um, keep doing what you're doing, man. We'll, we'll be praying for you and, um,
Man, please do, Antonio. We should, man, we need to link up in the physical soon, man, for real.
Oh, yeah. Absolutely. I'm just, I, I've been running so crazy right now because you know, I'm, you know, I'm active at my church, do the filming, you know, running the, uh, business, man. Look, I did, I did twenty properties yesterday. You know, I do landscaping, lawn mowers. I did twenty. And this is one, one man show. So, um, I'm busy with that, but we can, I can cut some time out and carve some time out uh, so we can get together and, uh, talk about some things and some, um, different ideas and everything like that.
Definitely, brother, man. And I listen, I'm gonna connect with David too, man, because David and Christian, my guy, my CEO of Most High Media, man. Anybody who wants to any further information, if anybody's watching, man, check out the Most High Media app. Um, and like I said, I don't get, this is not, I don't get any endorsements. I don't get paid for this. This is service work. This is volunteer work that I do with them. Um, but they do a lot for the community. I don't want to say a lot and David is connected with them, Coming Home Ministries, uh, Hope Link, where they pay for people to get into recovery, man. They, they raise the money. And like, yeah, brother, I'm gonna reach out to David, but Antonio, man, just, just get with me soon, man. Let me know what your schedule looks like, man. We need to cut some time out, man. I wanna sit down with you, bro. I wanna break bread with you.
All right, let's do that. And, uh, I'm gonna let you know when we gonna officially start on the, uh, the culture series. It's gonna be something that's ongoing. So, uh, would love to have you be a part of that. And, um, so we can just kinda see where all this stuff leads, man. Oh, so let, let everybody know where to follow you at and everything. If they wanna add you on the Facebook or anything like that, so they can keep up with what you got going on.
On Facebook, man, I am Sober Joseph. Um, you can find me on Antonio's page, Sober Joseph on Facebook, man. I, I, I try to update it as much as possible, man, just to show people with stories like mine that change is possible, no matter what the backstory is. Stop using it as a crutch, man, and, and, and use it as a stepping stone, man, because God can take that evil and turn it for his good. He's done it in my life. And if he do it for me, it's not because I'm awesome. It's not because I'm amazing. It's the same reason he did that with every other outcast in the history of the Bible, so that he remains the history, that he remains the hero of the story, one thousand percent, man. Thank you for having me on, Antonio.
Amen to that, brother. Hey, and, uh, I met, who, who was that I met that at Joe's thing? Was his name Brian? I can't remember.
That's my guy too, man. Yeah.
Okay, yeah, cause he hit, listen, he hit me, but I just been kinda like all over the place and we talked about coming on. So what I'm gonna do is, hey, reach out to him for me and I'll hit him back too. And, um, let him know that you gonna be a part of the culture series and I want him to come on too. So he can tell his story about, um, what he's been through, where he's at and, um, why he decided to, to make a turn in his life and go in a different direction. That's, that sounds great. And, uh, I would like to start this within the next week and a half.
Yes, sir. You gonna be there Friday? I'll talk to you later, Antonio. Appreciate it, brother.
All, all right, man. We'll, we'll talk to you soon.
All right, brother.
All right. All right. So that was Joseph Hicks. Uh, you guys heard the story. Please share these videos. Um, we'd appreciate if you guys can make a contribution. Uh, we got Cash App, that's, uh, War Room GC. That's War Room GC. It ain't gotta be no big donation. It could be five bucks, whatever, just whatever you can throw in. What I'm really trying to do is get some, uh, Bandit signs, some signs that we can put up around the county so people can find the show, um, everything. Now, I've seen some pictures of my studio area, but, uh, I've always been the audio engineer or whatever, but the cameras and all that, I had to kinda foot that bill myself out of my own personal money. And I don't mind doing that. I would have did it anyway. But if you guys can throw something on the pile, I would greatly appreciate that. Those funds will go to, uh, good things being used to try to help get the word out uh, for what we're trying to accomplish, to try to make sure that, um, the people that's running have a platform and that you guys have a place to come get the information. And also for anybody that wants to come on here, that you have a voice as well. Uh, make sure you like, share and subscribe. Share this video. Make sure you share this video. That's the most powerful thing that you can do. And, um, we'll see you guys on the next one.